Chairman Eclavea. It will be Chairman Eclavea is attempting to log on. Hopefully, we'll see him soon. Vice Chair Laguana.
Estegiadzu.
Secretary Treasurer Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Camacho. Mr. Vice Chair Commissioner Camacho called in and said she would not be able to make today's meeting.
Okay.
Hey, Commissioner Orleano.
Here.
Commissioner Rias.
Here.
And Commissioner Westling.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Vice Chair, you have a quorum, a quorum of five.
You need to announce a compliance, public law twenty-four dash one zero nine.
Okay, um, thank you, Madam Secretary, and would you please do the announcement? I don't have, I don't have the agenda with me right now, so can you please just proceed with the required?
In compliance with public law twenty-four dash one oh nine Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, office of public meeting announcement for Wednesday, May eleven, two thousand twenty-two. In the Pacific Daily News on Wednesday, May four, twenty twenty-two, and Monday, May nine, twenty twenty-two. Also, all those that are require, need accommodations are also on that notice. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Next will be the approval of minutes on the agenda.
All right. Let me go to my other email.
I'd like to just comment. I was absent from the April twenty-seventh meeting. But I see in the minutes here, there's reference to separate attached reports for the Executive Director's Report for the Guam Economic Development Authority Report and also uh, oh, um, a letter from Attorney Shane Black. I guess all of these, of course, were presented at the April twenty-seventh meeting. Uh, but I don't see them attached to the uh, to these minutes. So perhaps they'll be attached.
Yes, Kathy, could you make sure that that happens? That the attachments are attached to the minutes? And if you could possibly send Commissioner Westling on the side, have Mara Center those attachments? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Kathy, were they, were they provided in the packet for the, for the April twenty-seventh meeting?
Not that.
They were? Okay, then I'll just, I'll just go to that email. And freedom. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Vice Chair.
Okay, go ahead. Um, I've got, okay, any, um, any other any other comments on the the minutes?
Vice Chair.
Oh.
I, can you hear me?
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Rios.
I don't have any comments, just that I wasn't present for that meeting and probably did not vote on the approval of those minutes.
Okay. Thank you for the for that.
Same with my shot for, for Commissioner Westling. I was absent from that meeting also, so I'll abstain from voting on the approval of minutes.
Okay. So we await Commissioners Cruz and Commissioner Orleano.
Well, I'm ready to make a motion to approve the minutes from April twenty-sixth, but do we do, do we have enough commissioners to act, you know, as it or administratively, we can act in it. There's three of us that was present at that meeting, so. I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Is that the minutes from April twenty-seven?
Right.
Mr. Director, go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner Cruz.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, subject to corrections per audio recording.
Okay, um, is there a second on that motion?
I second that motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Orleano. Any discussion? No discussion? Okay, Mr. Director, I guess we can still move on this, right?
Yes, you can. Yeah, because you have a majority of those present, a simple majority, it could pass.
Okay, so let all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries, Mr. President. We continue with your, the Director's Executive Director's Report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Okay, the following are the updates for the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission on the budget. Our pre-hearing for the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission's FY twenty twenty-three budget hearing is scheduled for May seventeen, two thousand twenty-two, at Senator Jolson Augustine's office. This is the pre-hearing. We do this before the hearing. And the hearing will be on June second. On February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, we submitted a budget request for four hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars. This is an increase of ninety thousand, uh, one hundred sixty-nine dollars over the FY twenty twenty-two budget appropriation of four hundred eight thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars. The increase is due to our desire to preserve historical documents by purchasing computers and digitizers with software needed to digitize these land doc, these land documents and to hire up to two land agents to prevent the loss of institutional knowledge should the two unclassified employees be replaced and the lone land agent decide to retire within the next year. On April nine, two thousand and twenty-two, the Department of Administration informed us that the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission is to reimburse the general fund three hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents for its FY twenty twenty-one expenditures. I'm requesting your approval of resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven to wire transfer the three hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents from the Ancestral Land Survey Infrastructure and Development Fund to Department of Administration via the Bank of Guam, and that resolution is attached. Uh, we have an agreement with Department of Administration that we will spend all of our, our funds throughout the year based on our approved appropriation. And then at the end of the fiscal year, we, we, we would reimburse them for the amount expended. Uh, because of this, we will not have any lapsed funds. So we're actually able to get the amount that we spent through the last fiscal year down to the penny. Uh, the funds are collecting interest in the, uh, the city count, in the ancestral land city count in Coast three sixty. So, uh, that's been a good deal for us. So now we have to pay for, pay for it. Our current balance in the city count is over eight hundred thousand dollars. So after we pay this, we'll have about five hundred thousand left in the city account. Okay, then now the, and at the end of this, I'll ask for your approval of that resolution. Now, the Farmers Cooperative Association of Guam, the Farmers Co-op. On April twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-two, our office received a letter from the public auditor informing us that the Farmers Cooperative Association of Guam had its nonprofit tax status revoked by the Department of Revenue and Taxation on October twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one. We are also in receipt of a letter from Michael Carlson, who's the senior policy advisor for Senator Clinton Regel, inquiring if any negotiations or other actions have commenced with the Farmers Co-op. According to Mr. Carlson, because of the Farmers Co-op's change in tax status, we're required to notify the Guam Legislature should the Guam Ancestral Land Commission begin any negotiations or other actions with the Farmers Co-op for the continued use of the property. Uh, those two letters are attached to my report. On Monday, though, just this past Monday, May nine, two thousand twenty-two, a meeting was held with the governor and representatives from the Farmers Co-op, GITA, the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and Ancestral Lands. And at the meeting, we were informed that the Farmers Co-op was working with the Department of Revenue and Tax and would soon have their nonprofit tax status reinstatement. My understanding, it will be retroactive uh, to when it was canceled. And the details of that will provide, be provided by GITA in their report when they come up with that. So uh, with that, I'm recommending that the, the letters, for one, are attachment B and C in my report. Uh, I could read it for you if you want. But my recommendation is to leave things as they are and allow the Farmers Co-op to, to fix their tax status. Uh, they've submitted the paperwork and they're in the process of doing that. And if that's the case, then we will have, then we would have nothing else to do but to attempt to collect the rent uh, from two thousand and twenty and very soon now for two thousand and twenty-one. Okay, the and Guam Ancestral Lands FY twenty-one Citizen Centric Report uh, in compliance with the Guam Code annotated Chapter nineteen, Section one, nine two two A, was released at Office of the Governor, the Speaker, and the Public Auditor, Monday, May nine, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, these reports are supposed to be released sixty days from when our audit uh, report is released by the OPA, and that was released in uh, April sixth, so the due date for the release of the CCR, the Citizen Centric Report, will be June second. So we're way ahead of schedule, and we sent you all a copy of that via email. If you didn't receive it, let me know, we'll resend it out. Okay, the GITA Ancestral Lands Investment Services MOU is still out circulating for review and signatures. My understanding uh, via the, uh, report from GITA is that it's at the governor's office waiting for her signature. It's already received the AG signature. And in RFP for, uh, uh, Polaris Point Properties, so RFP twenty-one dash zero one one, negotiations are still ongoing. And now, last, at the last meeting of the board, uh, I was asked whether the Board of Commissioners should meet regularly, that semi-monthly or monthly. And here's a few things that I observed, and I asked and I polled our, uh, the staff here in the office to let me know, uh, if they have any issues, and I pretty much summarized it for you. Okay, so the following basically is, because you, you're not aware of the details that we go through in setting up these meetings. So what I decided to do is summarize it this way, that first start off with the preparation deadlines for the semi-monthly meetings uh, to be in compliance with the open government law. Uh, first is the agenda. Uh, the agenda for the following meeting, like after today's meeting, will have to be approved by the first Friday. That would be this Friday, giving us two days to come up with the agenda and have it approved. Uh, the board meeting agenda is the most important document when it comes to ensuring that the meeting runs smoothly. The draft agenda, based on other committee, uh, what's that, boards and commissions that I personally have sat on, uh, should be prepared and circulated for input at least a week, hopefully two weeks before board meeting. Circulating a draft agenda in advance ensures that any operational items requiring board approval make it onto the agenda and get the timely consideration that they require. So that's very important, but rather than giving you two weeks to review it, to put in your, uh, your recommendations or what you think should be on the agenda, we give you, I give the chairman two days. And then we have to advertise it because of requirements that open government law. So we don't have time to circulate the agenda to any of the commissioners. So then the advertisement for the approved agenda, once we receive it, if hopefully we receive it on Friday, it must be prepared and submitted to the PDN that following Monday uh, to be published by the following Wednesday, because we have to get it to the media uh, two days prior to publication. So it has to be out by Monday. And then the agenda must also be placed in the public notice portal by Monday again and submitted to OTIC for posting on our website. That too will happen on Monday. So if we have a meeting two weeks from tonight or from today, uh, the agenda will have to be approved by Friday. And all the ads and everything will have to be prepared and submitted for publication to all that by Monday, which gives us no time to circulate the agenda with any of you. And that's why you haven't been receiving any of that from us, because it's physically impossible. So we were also advised now by OTIC that because of the high demand for streaming, and that's because we're now required by law to live stream all of our meetings, the network is peaking to an all-time high. Streaming and other production data operations are on the same pipeline. And because of this, OTIC has closed YouTube during working hours to stabilize network issues. To continue to live stream our meetings as mandated by law, we have to work closely with OTIC to schedule access to YouTube. But because of that, remember, we lost one meeting last time because we could not live stream. Uh, we brought in our personal computer, Joey has, and we're able to hook up via wifi to YouTube so that we could guarantee that we would live stream, but it shouldn't be required to do so. If we want to live stream, if I hire PBS to come in, it'll cost us two hundred fifty dollars for the first two hours and a hundred dollars each hour after. Uh, that would pretty much break the bank as far as live streaming our, our meetings. We can't afford it. Uh, and then the transcription of minutes must begin immediately after each board meeting to have it ready for the next board meeting. And Mara, uh, her entire time pretty much is dedicated to preparing the minutes, leaving little or no, no time to, to basically to train her for other tasks. And because of the limited time for preparation, the Commissioners' meeting packet is usually provided twenty-four hours before each meeting. These meetings should be provided to the Commissioners at least seven days. That's one week before a scheduled meeting in order to ensure Commissioners are prepared for the meeting. But if we were to do that, I would have to send you, uh, the packet by Wednesday of next week. We won't have anything ready by Wednesday, next week, so there will be no packet. The packets aren't completed until, uh, and we try to gather all the materials and have it on hand by Monday, to send it to by Monday, but just like hap, what happened yesterday, because things come in late, we don't send it to you till the evening or late afternoon of the day before the meeting. So that has been a huge challenge. Then the Guam Ancestral, uh, Lands Commission staff end up spending most of their time planning for and following up after board meetings, then doing other work such as preparing, uh, the rules and regs for the land bank, our audit, which we just completed, and believe it or not, the, the OPA sent us a note that we had to get in our GAT chart before May first. So our, our audit has started. We ended one, and as soon as we ended it, we started the other one. Our GAT chart's been submitted, and now we have to start complying with submitting our documents to whoever the OPA selects as our auditor. So that's always an ongoing thing. Of course, the budget, we come up for pre-budget hearing uh, in a couple of weeks, and then by June second, we actually have our budget hearing. The Citizen Centric Report is required to be, uh, placed out and published sixty days from the end of the audit. Our current audit ended April nine. Our new audit just started. But a Citizen Centric Report based on that is due June second, but because everything happening, we try to get that out as quickly as possible. Then strategic plans, our strategic plans are due in November. We have to start working on that. The grant applications and submissions, we just turned in our TAP grant. Uh, these are the first times, uh, any, that, that I've checked on record that Ancestral Lands has ever applied for federal grants. And this TAP grant we applied for now will be our third grant. We've already received two grants that have greatly assisted us because of our limited budget. So now we applied for another one. But that takes time, uh, when we're working it. And of course, the landowners' meetings. Uh, we concluded the last landowner meeting. Uh, we've been having two or three of them a week for meeting with, uh, property owners in the Radio Baragada area, what's most people refer to as Eagles Field, been having like two or three of them uh, a week, and each lasts about a couple of hours or more. So we spent a lot of time on meeting with them to find out what their concerns are. And then, of course, we have the various legislative hearings and oversight hearings that we must prepare for and the various Freedom of Information Act that we have to respond to. And we've done the training. We've completed that, uh, for the ethics in government, but we don't have much time to do other training. Uh, I know that with the modules, so that we could sit down and actually negotiate our own RFPs, we must complete all four modules. Because we don't have time, I have none of those modules personally completed myself. Neither is Joey or anybody else. Kathy's the only one that has one module. But to be able to do that on our own, we must have four. So of course, we outsource that to anyone we can, and I'm very happy that GITA has been there for us, uh, to sit in and help us negotiate contracts, write licenses and leases because of our lack of credentials with the modules. To do that training would probably take about three months. So we don't have time for that. Uh, so we must outsource. Then, of course, the cost, the bottom line of what this cost us, uh, the cost for advertisement has increased from three hundred sixty-eight dollars to seven hundred sixty dollars monthly, simply because now we're required by law, uh, to put out a paid ad that includes our entire, uh, uh, agenda, and that doubled the size of the ads. Now, if we were to live stream and pay for that service, that would increase, but we found a way around it, but we're using our personal equipment to do so. So that increased our cost of advertisement just for the, for the print ad from four thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars, nine thousand, one hundred twenty dollars annually. And this is, these, this lives, leaves a little to no funds available to pay for the publication of the full-page advertisement that we're trying to get out, that we promised the speaker that we would get out uh, for the transfer in progress of potential release of federal properties. Uh, we basically don't have the ki, that kind of money in our budget. So we're counting our pennies right now, and the cost for one full-page ad, we're hoping to put two out uh, is, for one full page is one thousand two hundred forty-two dollars for black and white and one thousand five hundred forty-two dollars for color. And that's if we put one full-page ad out in the PDN and one out in the Guam Post. But that would be just for the transfer in progress. What we wanted to do is also advertise the ad that we put out earlier, I believe in two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty was the last time we had that ad out with all the other properties that we still have on hand that were returned under, uh, public law one oh three dash three three nine, uh, that we can actually return to the landowners with much, not much issue. So, uh, during the early stage of the re-establishment of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, uh, as a standalone agency, which we are now, we've completely cut the umbilical cord from the Department of Land Management. Uh, we've moved away from them. We're trying to set up our website, but that will come with a TAP grant, should we get it. It was necessary at that time and during those times to have regular semi-monthly meetings. That's two meetings a month. There was a lot of things we had to handle. Uh, these meetings were needed to keep you, the Commissioners, informed and to provide timely guidance, uh, to management. However, I feel that, uh, the Ancestral Lands Commission has matured, and it is time for the board to relax its frequency of meetings. Uh, moving to regular monthly board meetings would allow the staff time to focus on other areas of business instead of spending most of their time planning for and following up after board meetings. Special meetings uh, of the board can be held between regular meetings to conduct business. They cannot wait until the next regular scheduled board meetings. Now, special meetings are different because when you do a special meeting, uh, for one, the board will have to call it, and you would be pretty much talking about one single item. I mean, if our item or, or the issue that we're going to discuss is the rules and regulations, that's all we're going to discuss. Uh, minutes are not, minutes are taken, but they're not, the minutes of the prior meetings are not approved that, at that meeting. So the preparation and everything for that is simpler. The ad for that will be smaller because the ad will be half the size of what we have to put out for the regular meetings. So it makes it more affordable. And as soon as we get our tablets in, uh, we will be able to live stream when you go come into the office. Uh, because we don't have the ability to, the law requires us to live stream. If we all have face-to-face meetings right now and you come into the office, we have no way, uh, we, and we don't have the ability, we don't have the funds to bring PBS in to live stream our meetings. So what we've elected to do was to buy each of you tablets. And with that, with the wifi that we hooked up in the office, we'll be able to live stream our meetings of each one of us, just like we're doing right now in the Zoom uh, and through YouTube. So once we get those tablets in, it, then we can start meeting face-to-face. The problem we're having with that is everything's been approved. We're waiting for the purchase order to be signed, but the chief procurement officer is not in. She's off island. Uh, the Assistant Chief Procurement Officer is back from sick leave or somewhere for two days. We're trying to get our PO to the top of the line so she can sign it, because we've been waiting for months. Uh, after two days, she'll be gone. Uh, Bob Kono, who's kind of like the third in line for Chief Procurement Officer, is off island for medical. Uh, without any of them, we can't get any purchase orders signed. We're stuck. Uh, and so is every agency in Guam. You know, we're not the only ones that this is hitting. So just to let you know that we're, we're pushing on that. Kathy's been on with GSA and AS. Are, we're just waiting for the PO and his signature. Please sign it so we can go out and pick up our equipment, so we could have our face-to-face meetings and live stream them at a more, uh, cost-affordable manner, then bring in PBS for two hundred fifty dollars for the two, first two hours and a hundred dollars thereafter, because we simply can't afford that. But we can't afford to buy a one-time purchase, one-time output of funds to buy these equipment, and then we could live stream for free because we've set up wifi in the office. So we've been planning for this for months. The problem is, is bringing in, uh, getting the, there are purchase orders approved and signed. And right now, everything's approved. We're just waiting for signature, but waiting for GSA to have somebody down there who can sign. So we're not the only agency waiting for that, but it does cause us to have, uh, problems on our end. But that's, for that, I'm, I'm recommending that we move to monthly meetings. Uh, those are the reasons, and this didn't all come just from me. I talked to the staff. I had them polled, and I asked them to please let me know what they think. And this is what, uh, everybody agreed with. So I simply put it into words and into a way that can be easily understood and into a format, uh, that shows how we've been running things here. But we have gotten things done, but I have to admit that a lot of these folks in here, I don't pay overtime, but many days when I leave, uh, Joey's still here up to six o'clock. Kathy comes in on weekends, and they all come in by seven, seven-thirty in the morning, although we don't open up till eight uh, to get the work done. They're extremely committed. And, and they want to do, uh, the best job they can. I'm just saying, I don't want them to burn out. You know, we have a great dedicated staff. I don't want to burn them out. I need to get them trained. I need Kathy to go in and get the other three modules under her wing. I need to get it under mine also. And we need to bring in extra staff because And we need to bring in extra staff because. Be honest with you, you know, we all know there's an election coming. If the election doesn't go our way, then of course, we will be replaced. Kathy and I. Will be replaced. Joey's now of he qualifies for retirement. You can lose all three of us. That means you lose all the institutional knowledge. So I'm going to try with the budget to try to get those funds. And the ninety thousand extra that we added in was not to come from our our CIT account. I asked for it to come out of the general fund. It's that important. If it's important to our senators. To keep us up and running, to make sure we don't lose the knowledge that we've gained over the years. And the materials that and the operations that Kathy and I have set up here along with Joey. If we don't want to lose that, then we have to train somebody now. Somebody who's younger, somebody who will spend more time in government, somebody who is in the classified service. So we we need to get that done so we don't lose the information we currently have. I like the passes down. In fact, I have everything on the on my computer or prep just in case something the worst happens. And we have everything on file. When we came in, there were no files for us, no working files. We only have one computer that I was able to borrow from Land Management. And now we all have our computers, we all have backup systems. We're figuring backup beyond backups and we want to save the materials that we have by digitizing our files. And we have Andy's working on that, but in between, he's also working with. People who do walk in and who we do entertain for issues around. That needs his work and also Joey's work dealing with the land bank. So we have to concentrate on that. We're given a lot of other tasks from the front office, from Adloop. And also many times also from the legislature when things come up. We do our best to meet all of them and and respond to them as best we can. The last one, of course, being the public hearing on the submerged lands. And we we try to follow through on all this, but. Believe me, it is a task. It requires more than eight hours a day, five days a week. So. You know, you do have a dedicated staff here. I just want to make sure this goes on and I don't burn them out. So that's why I'm recommending we go to monthly meetings and if anything. We're very much open to having special meetings that deal with one subject matter and. Where we don't have to have the minutes rushed and prepared from the previous meeting to get it to you. Because if you notice. The minute the minute is kind of lengthy and the reason why you're getting it the way it's written now. Is to so that Mara doesn't have to go through and include everything that was written and simply place them as attachments. Because those are like my report now, it's it's written only the stuff that. I'm speaking on now outside of the written report, she will write into the report for you. So that's why you're getting it this way. It's a lot quicker for her to do so. And I sure like to get her trained in other things too, so she could pick up some of the load from Kathy. Because she pretty much works as Kathy's assistant, just like Andy pretty much works as as Joey's assistant. And. So that's why I'm requesting that we we move to monthly meetings if it's your favor and. Of course, we're always open, like I said, to special meetings. And if we could have work sessions, that would be great. So we could bring you in. And discuss issues like what are coming up in the budget hearings, what I believe are going to be, the questions are going to be asked and what our answers should be. In fact, I'll prepare that before the meeting I have with the pre-hearing with the with the Senator, with Senator San Augustin. And send it out to you for those of you who will be attending or want to attend the public hearing on June second with me at the legislature. Okay, that's my report. Thank you for the opportunity to present it. If you. Have any questions or need more information, by all means, please ask. I do ask that you do look at the. Ancestral lands GLC Resolution number twenty dash twenty-two dash zero zero seven. That's the one to do the wire transfer. The department administrations files and their records matched down to the penny with our ledgers that I. Thank Kathy for keeping accurate down to the penny. And that's why I say it's three hundred nineteen thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. So it matched with DOA down to the penny. And I tell you, when it's one or two cents off, we keep searching for it until we find it. So. So that's why I say, please approve that resolution and we could close the books on FY twenty-one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Director. For your report and I see Commissioner Cruz. Are you Commissioner Cruz? Go ahead.
I'd like to discuss the once a month board meeting now. It's a lot of it is administrative matters that. That if the director feels that once a month. You know, a meeting is sufficient for us to cover a lot of things then. You know, of course, I don't know whether we need a motion for that. It's just like. When it comes to legal matters, we refer to our legal counsel. So administrative matters, we check with our director. So but I'm not and then. So with the changes and making it a once a month meeting, we need to prepare to make it a lengthy. Meeting so we may. Go beyond five o'clock. So that's my only concern. But we can make this like a pilot thing to see how it's going to work out for once something, you know. And again, like the director said, if there's an emergency, we can always have a special meeting.
Okay, Mr. Are you done, Commissioner Cruz?
Yes, I want, you know, again, I need to find out whether we need to vote in the once a month meeting because it's always been twice. Not semi. We need to make a motion to vote in it. So.
Okay, let's hear from the others. I see Commissioner Rios with his hand raised, Mr. You're recognized, Mr. Commissioner Rios.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I just wanted to say and thank you, I'm Mr. Director for that report. As usual, it's a very thorough report and we always, always, always appreciate your hard work and. And I can see that that on with all those timelines and deadlines that have to be made. I I agree. I think it should be once a month. I I really think that there's a lot of work that needs to be done in there and I hate to see. All that wasted talent going to prepare, not that it's, I mean, you. You guys work so hard and to put all that effort into just the preparations and getting that through. It's a lot of work. And it's not like, you know, we're a staff of fifty. So that we can designate somebody just to handle that, which is I already think is a full-time job as it is. But I I would, I would, I would hope that that the rest of the commissioners feel as I do in this case, I really think it should be once a month. And as as usual, if something comes up that needs to needs attention, then that would be the time to. To advertise for a special meeting, but I would like to see once a month as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Rios. Before I go in and I would like to recognize. Other commissioners and I see Commissioner Wesley, you are recognized, Commissioner.
Thank you, Vice Chair LaGuatia. I too would just like to give my thanks to our director. And to the staff of Guam ancestral lands commission for the work that they do. Director, thank you very much for bringing things into perspective for us. As to what the staff is tasked with doing each month and preparing for. Our meetings and also what you would like to see their talents be directed to. To further these really the enhancement of the operation of the Guam ancestral lands commission. So I too support. Both Commissioner Cruz and Commissioner Rios's sentiments that we move to a monthly. Board meeting at this time and as Commissioner Cruz said that we could at least try it out. And and see how it goes, call special meetings when emergency matters need to be addressed. And as time goes on, if we find that we have to, you know, readjust our meeting schedules, we can decide to do that at that time. But I I see no reason why we shouldn't at least try to streamline our operations, save money. Allow, you know, further growth and development in other areas for our for our commission. And then move to do monthly meetings. Thank you for this opportunity, Chair, Vice Chair LaGuatia to speak.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Again, any others? As I see, Mr. Commissioner Rios, go ahead, proceed again.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. Just just add another, I just wanted to add one other thing to that is. If we could please move to in-person as soon as possible, I think. You know, I think that we'd be a lot more efficient. I think being able to be in the same room and. And really just come to closure in a lot of issues. I really think that it just makes things things a lot easier for us to decide on on an issue and come to closure on an issue. I I'm really saddened by, you know, when we put things off. I understand that sometimes we really need to think about it, but. You know, the agenda will come out earlier. It'll give us time to really think about our thoughts and what what we'd like to say during the meeting. So I think that we'd be a lot more efficient and get moved moved forward and a lot of. On a lot of cases and a lot of situations that need to be decided on a lot more efficiently we were in person. And and given more time to see the agenda, go over the minutes and so forth than any other attachments we need to see. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Rios. But before we move on, Mr. Director, I see Chairman. Eclavea that he is logged in, but I don't see no video. Chairman Eclavea, are you? Available? I see him. There he is.
Buenos, everybody. My apologies for the delay, technical difficulties. Was very heavy. Sorry about that. My apologies.
Okay, Mr. Chair, before we continue, I would just like to acknowledge before we we since we're already on this on this particular. Can I, can I? Yeah, because I would like to to add on, but before I I would like to add my comments, I would like. Commissioner Cruz again, raise your hand. Go ahead, Commissioner Cruz.
I didn't raise that my end.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, any other, any other comments before I would like to add on? Are there any other comments from other, from any other commissioners? With, okay, with none. Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you for that. I mean, Mr. Director, thank you for that report. I I too, I am, I have no problem with the monthly meetings. However. I would like from here on, Mr. Director. That this that, you know, particularly the May ninth meeting. I noticed that those were the governor, Gida, Guam ancestral lands director, Rev and Tax. And I would like to have suggest that our chairman be present in part of these meetings. Because it's very important that we are aware of the negotiations and the ongoing matters. In particular, Mr. Director, through the emails that you have provided to us with the in one. Instance with the Farmers Co-op Association with the letter from Mr. Michael. What's, yeah, right, his name, yeah, he sent us a letter that was very eye-opening. Said that their 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 tax status had had been. Expired since twenty twenty-one. That was a complete a year ago and it. It indicated that it was open to possible negotiations with no less than ten percent. Of the 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 rental of the or the lease. Agreement that would require legislative action. And. If I read that clearly, that it was no less than ten percent, we were open to negotiations. That point and also. That, yes, the. I would just would like to ensure that our chairman. Be a part of those meetings because this is the second one already that I've. That come to my attention, most particularly the Eagle Field meeting with the families and I. And I would just like to ensure that our chairman or one of the members, at least one be present. To inform or to be informed of such matters. Because. You know, there was an insulting letter from our from the Secretary Treasurer for Farmers Co-op. That letter with regards to having the unavailable unavailability of a. Of CFO, Chief Financial Officer, and she ended her letter that if you have one, to please provide one. That's a low blow. I mean, that was unnecessary and I think that.
It's uncle.
Yeah, that needs to be, yeah, that's. You know, to me, they're pushing and shopping and what we're trying to do is just right the wrong and and do the right thing. That's all I'm saying and. I just would like if Mr. Chairman, the chairman is there, I'm sorry, this my unstable. I got to get on ethernet, but if I would like before I would yield to our chairman. I would like to, you know, have him. At least him be present in all the other matters in lieu of the monthly meetings because things are going on. And we are not, we're not a part of it. And I I see that there are several. Matters here that. That, you know, we can, we can work together as a board and as a commission. Mr. Director, I I yield to you. My name is Mr. Chairman. Please take over. Welcome.
Okay, could could I explain the what the occurrence before Secretary Treasurer comes in?
Well, I just wanted to say that, you know, the on the matters with the farmers and I think Gida will also. Discuss, you know.
Yes, it's on their report. That's that's true, but. This pretty much was not a negotiation, was more informational. The information that I walked away with is that. What happened was as soon as I received the information from Mike Carlson and from the OPA. I forwarded you the information almost within thirty minutes or less after receiving it. But so did everyone else receive that that those documents. So when we were called in. Basically, it was to inform us that. The Farmers Co-op had completed the documents and had submitted them to. The Department of Revenue and Taxation. So it wasn't a negotiation with us. It was more informational. That we're being told that they've taken this action to regain their nonprofit tax status. And that's how come I'm informing you through the report today because that just occurred Monday. We got this, I think it was Friday. And within three minutes or so, I made copies of it and I sent it out to you. And then we had a meeting on it Monday and. I believe I talked to the chairman about it or and I told him that on Monday that. It'll be in my report today. And basically, what we were told was, what I have in here is that, yes, if they weren't. And if they do not obtain their nonprofit tax status. They're attempting to do it, but if they do not, then you're right. That if they become a for-profit organization, then the rate of rent for the property be at ten percent of the. Fair market, the actual fair market value of that of that property. Which will be significantly higher than the three thousand dollars that they're proposing to pay us for two thousand and twenty. And already, I know when May hits, Gida will be sending about another notice telling them that they owe us for two thousand and twenty-one. Also, which will probably be about the same amount. So, yeah, this was more informational. And that's why I advise you that knowing that they're attempting to get their nonprofits tax status. Back and it's very likely that they will if they do comply with the OPA and if they do comply with Rev Tax. Because that is not negotiated with us. We have nothing to do with their tax status. That's between them and revenue and tax. And then cleaning up their record with the OPA as far as audits are concerned. Once they do that, then they'll 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 be back on track and in compliance with the law. But currently, they are not. And Mike Carlson wants us to reply and I have not replied because I I needed to know what action are we going to take and I'm. I'm recommending that we take no action pending the results of their application with Rev Tax. To obtain or reinstate their nonprofit status. Because that's something that's in flux right now. We don't know where that's going to take us. But I'm just saying, give them enough time to recover that. Of course, they're going to have a difficult time. It's not going to be easy for them. And we will do our best to with Gida to collect the funds that are owed to us. They did send us that they. They accumulated a hundred and sixty-two thousand plus dollars. In the year in the gross income for the year of two thousand twenty. And we're just supposed to get two percent of that, which is just over three thousand dollars for the entire year. So it's it's a nominal amount, but it's still something that will go into the land bank and we have our. And we have our fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we collect these funds for, uh, the, the people who's, we hold this in trust for. So, yeah, this was an informational type thing that we were called in to the governor's chambers. So it was not one to be negotiated. Of course, I would like you and, and of course, our, our chair to be in many of these meetings if it is possible. I would really appreciate that. So, yeah, I'm open for any question, but that's exactly what occurred. But I keep you informed as much as possible as soon as we get the information out.
Sure. I'm sure you're, you're new.
I'm sorry.
I think it's frozen.
Okay. There, uh, thank you for that clarification. But, you know, Mr. Director, whether it be informational, I suggest the chairman at least be there. You know, we are, we are constantly being bombarded by the public and, uh, and we have, we, 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 we don't, we don't have an answer when they ask us, they, uh, like most particularly the Eagle Field, um, matter. And which I heard that just you notified us. Thank you for sharing your, your information that they're possibly considering others. But, you know, whether it be informational, please, I would like the chair and, and I sure hope the other commissioners agree on that so that we can be informed. And thank you also for informing us, because you did send us a lot of information and, uh, you know, the, that, that, and, and for clarifying that letter, the, uh, the tax status from a nonprofit to for-profit. That's when it changes, because it's based on the Guam code annotated, that, that, that it would affect in that matter. And, uh, uh, thank you for that. But, um, yes, it is very important with, uh, that, uh, I think, uh, one of the, uh, one member. I believe the chairman should be there with all due respect. Um, you know, it would be only right and to justice that, that, the, the, the commissioners be represented in, in the meetings, be it informational. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I, I, uh, pretty much concur with, uh, our vice chair's, uh, uh, statements. But Director, you've been very, uh, very, very, very forthcoming in all the events that's going on, in particular with, uh, with the Eagle Field situation. And I suggest to you for that, you've just always been transparent upfront with, with everything. And the board really appreciates your, your being candid.
Yes, and, and, and Mr. Chair, remember, you did attend the very first meetings with all of them. And then we were ordered to have individual meetings with them throughout the day and throughout the week. And we just completed that as we were instructed. So I, I don't, I don't know if, uh, if the others were aware that you did attend.
Yes, uh, I'm, I, I, yeah, you, you did put it on the, on the, uh, the message chat board. And, um, I'm not sure though if everybody understood. I did attend that, that meeting. Even a prior meeting with, with, with you and the governor, with the staff prior to that. I met with them prior, just right prior to the meeting. And, um, um, overall, it went very good. It went very good. But with, 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 uh, with what our vice chair is saying, if, uh, you know, and especially, uh, if it's real critical matters, basically regarding the, uh, the, the landowners. And it's, it's, uh, kind of like a positive for the members to be there, myself, the vice chair, even the other commissioners. I'm sure you'll let us know. And, um, and, uh, yeah, I, I agree with our vice chair's sentiments. We should at least participate in some of those meetings.
As soon as I'm aware of what the governor's decision will be, I'm understanding that it might be made this month. Uh, you will get a report on that. Depending on how she decides where, because the issue is not if the hospital's gonna be built. The issue is location and she's not yet fixed on a permanent location at this time. It's just that Eagles Field is the most controversial, because it is the most preferred location. But it is not the only location and you were there at the last meeting. So that one meeting with her, so you're very much aware, there are seventeen other sites. And Eagles Field is number one. But because of the issues with the military, the landowners and others, uh, it may not be number one for long. You know, so we're just waiting for the go-ahead and then from there we'll work on that. And you'll be informed as soon as the governor makes up her mind. But that's why it's been in the media a lot and people have been discussing it is because they think that it's a done deal. It is not a done deal. This is all exploratory. That's what all these meetings were, just exploratory meetings to find out, uh, if, if the landowners want it or would agree to it. And if they disagree, then it definitely will not be there. So that, that's where we're at at this point. You know, other than that, it's a work in progress and, and that's as far as what I actually know, to be honest with you. That's, that's as much as I know at this point.
We, uh, Director, we, we also do know that, uh, I think one of the, the, although there's other options, I think the second primary option after Eagles Field, uh, the director, you, uh, you informed us that would be the adjacent property that we own.
Yes. And that's where we get heavily involved, because the commissioners would have to approve that.
Yes.
So that becomes option two. And that's heavily, that's heavily on the, the, the board of commissioners. And should that decision be made this month, you definitely would be made aware of that, because then of course, uh, all the meetings are gonna be involving all of you.
Yeah, so that's a whole.
It's a whole new ballgame.
A whole different ballgame, which is, which is, I think, uh, 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 you know, advantageous to the beneficiaries of the board and this trust. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, that, okay, thank you. Yeah, no, no, I, oh, wow, I didn't know about that. But now in, in, in that, with that matter, then like you said, it does change. And now, uh, any lands that would be taken from our inventory would require either land condemnations or legislative action.
Or at least, or, uh, uh, negotiated, uh, negotiated terms with the agency where we can purchase it.
Not necessarily a land taken.
Or, yeah.
We're looking at the land bank heavily concentrated in that area. So, but that's just in case, if that's made, then of course it comes to the commissioners and the commissioners will make that decision on all of those options that are open and available. I would always, uh, push for a, a lease.
Absolutely.
But it's up to the commissioners. The decision would be in your laps. I would come up with my recommendations though. And it's leaning heavily in that direction. So, yes, but we'll see what happens. Uh, that decision, I understand, will be made soon.
Of, of course, um, as far as myself as the chairman and then, uh, um, it might be the same sentiments with the board that, of course, we'd like the, the original landowners at Eagles Field to, to take, uh, you know, to be, uh, take advantage of the situation if it's, is advantageous for them. You know, to, to have the hospital there. We want them first. Uh, and, 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 and if not, you know, we're, we're, we have the second option of having the beneficiaries of the trust be, uh, be, uh, taking, uh, taking advantage of the situation if it, if it's all there. We, that's, as the director said, that's where we make the determination.
Yeah. So it's all been exploratory up until this point. Uh, and hopefully a decision is made soon, so we would know, uh, what direction and, and what part of this will we be participating in? So, so far, that's, that's really all that has occurred at this point.
Okay, um, I'd like to make a couple of comments on, just for us to discuss real quick regarding, um, the farmer's market. And, um, what was the other one? Oh, the, um, the once a month meeting. Uh, but let's start first with the, with the, uh, once a month meeting. Uh, I just wanna basically, uh, bring up to the board's attention that, that we were having twice a month for many, many, many years, right from the beginning. And, uh, it was hectic. I mean, the meetings, ninety-nine percent was right at, after, went after five o'clock. Granted, it might not be the same, uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, weight of the, uh, the load of the work that we went through, but we were constantly going over the time. And even though we brought it up, you know, you know, because a lot of the, the, the staff would have to stay over. They weren't getting paid overtime. They were dedicated to their work. And, and we barely got enough time to cover. Sometimes we have to, 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 uh, stop where we're at and then, uh, get a table for the other meetings. So, um, granted that, that, uh, you know, we don't want to overwork what we have, limited resources we have in our board right now. Um, I think, I think we need to look at maybe, uh, Magai, yes, going to one. If that's, uh, the best alternative to basically not overworking our staff. And at the same time, uh, uh, balance the, the load, if there is a load. And especially, especially I know the minutes takes up a lot of time. And then I can see they're struggling to get out the packet. And I think that's a, as a result of them, of the, of them being overworked. So maybe at the same time, we should, we could look at that going to one, once a month again. And, uh, and then the other option is to see about streamlining our agenda. Because we've been, we've been, uh, finishing up our meetings a lot earlier and consistently a lot earlier, uh, which is, which is, I think, very good. And at the same time, we're not sacrificing our, our fiduciary duty to the, to the trust. So, uh, I noticed we've been under an hour and a half to two hours. There was one time I recall going close to five. But typically we've been down to about an hour and a half to two hours, which I think is great. So we should, if we could look at, uh, still look at the options of moving towards one a month. And then at the same time, maybe is if we streamlined it and not, you know, like, put heavy loads on, on one, on one meeting, space it out if that's the case. That's, that's basically what maybe I'm, 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 I'm looking at. If, if, uh, and Director, your, your, your input and the staff is critical in this, on how we move on it. And if you feel and the staff feels we should move to one, that would be the, uh, and that's the ideal situation for you, then I'm, I'm sure the board would, would accommodate.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's always special meetings.
Yeah. I'm sorry?
There's always the special meeting in case something important pops up in the middle.
Yes, exactly. And, 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 but the, the, there still needs to be the time to, to, uh, publish that, right? You still need the time to publish that, your meeting, right? It's not like you go a special meeting and then have them special meeting the next day. It's gotta comply with the, the, the law.
Yeah, with open government law, yes.
Okay, now, um, regarding, um, regarding, um, uh, regarding the, uh, F C A G, the, the farmer's market. Uh, the board is basically, we're at a catch twenty-two, because we are for the farmers. Okay, and at the same time, we have our duty to the beneficiaries of the trust. Uh, so, um, I think what we need to do, maybe this is a suggestion, maybe it's an idea that we can maybe work with them to get them to, 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 uh, to run, run the, uh, the co-op in a manner that, that you, highest and best use of the property and their situation with their status that actually, you know, benefits the trust as well. And we're not losing out on, on, on opportunities because of, uh, whatever reasons that they, they lack. If they're lacking in, 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 uh, leadership, that's basically out of our purview. But we cannot maybe have meetings with them that would, would, um, improve their, uh, their, their status and their income. That definitely is highest and best use for the, for, for what they have with our property and for the beneficiaries. So as opposed to being, you know, like, uh, you know, having a, a friction, I think maybe we could sit down and, 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 and work with them so that, you know, we're on the same page and it's a cooperation type of thing. As opposed to us just constantly taking our finger and pointing it, uh, in, in their faces and saying, you know, hey, that's basically just my thoughts on it.
Okay, well, hopefully they can get their tax status reinstated. And we can go back to just trying to collect the rent from them. Uh, but it, I believe that they will get it reinstated. They seemed pretty determined at that meeting, because Rev Tax was there. And Rev Tax acknowledged that they received all the documents. And, uh, they informed the Farmers Co-op on what other materials that they had to get through to regain their tax status. Uh, so I think they're going to get it. They're working closely with Rev Tax on that. Because we didn't cause them to lose it and we have no authority to re-grant it to them. Uh, it's the law. Our end is to pretty much follow the law. And that's what we have been doing. So that's why I'm saying is if we could hold off and, and see what, uh, and I could respond to Mr. Carlson's letter saying that, uh, we're not gonna take any action pending a Rev Tax attempt to, uh, or for the Farmers Co-op attempt to regain their, uh, nonprofit tax status. And maybe give them a little while and we'll, we'll, we'll keep it on the agenda. And that way, uh, we can bring it up and find out, uh, where they're at on it. And we could keep in contact with them. Just, just to see that they, they are moving in the direction that they, they said they were moving in on, on Monday.
Okay, uh, thank you, Director. Vice Chair?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, now that the, the public auditor has stepped in, then the audit report will, will indicate their, uh, their, uh, their, their either progress or regress.
Yes.
Because, um, uh, they, they have, uh, not provided that information. And thank, thank you for that, Mr. Director. That was a great letter that you sent them. And then there was a great letter from the, the OPA on the matter, from Mr. Duñez. And on another matter, uh, that Michael Carlson, right, is that, that's Lester, right, isn't it?
It sounds like it's Lester, might be same spelling as Lester's last name.
No, he, he changed his name. He's now he's going undercover now. No, because, uh, I know Lester, he's B I, yeah, he's with the B B, uh, is he at BBMR?
Oh, no, Lester is still at BBMR, but Mike is at the legislature.
Oh, so then it's brothers. Yeah, 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 that's right. You're right. They are brothers. I know who he's talking about now. Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Not too many Carlsons on Guam. Yes, I know Mike Carlson, but I don't know if he's Lester's brother, but they seem to be into budgets.
Yes, they, I think they are, because Lester is my classmate. Okay, thank you, Mr. Director on that. And, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity.
Very good.
Okay, so, uh, are we done? I, I know that we're on, we were on, uh, your executive report, number four, item four. So I guess we're done with that, Director?
Well, yes, uh, Mr. Chair, what we also wanted was action on the resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven. And that's so we could, uh, move forward with the wire transfer to reimburse the Department of Administration for funds we spent throughout the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And like I said earlier, our ledgers matched up with DOA's ledgers. And so we've got it down to the penny. So if we could take action on that. Uh, we do have a full quorum. I see Commissioner Camacho tuned in, uh, earlier. She was on, there she is. So we have.
Welcome. Good to see you again.
And if we could take that and then it'd be my understanding, I don't know if we need to take action on voting to have meetings monthly? Or is it just something that would be stated? I'm not sure how you wanna handle that.
Um, I think, I think let's, let's, let's address that on the next meeting again. Let's think about the, the other options I brought up and Director, let me, unless you're already, uh, you know, let's, 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 uh, uh, talk about it between us and see what, what, what the, the, you know, the whole issues are with, with the low. And then that we can probably take action as, as soon as possible, maybe the next meeting.
Okay, well, on the attachment, A, uh, GLC Resolution Number Two Thousand and Twenty-two dash zero zero seven. Uh, we should close the, the fiscal year of twenty twenty-one on that, once, should you guys approve it?
Okay, so we need a, we need a, we need a motion to, to approve the resolution, right? We need a, okay, I'm sorry, um, Commissioner Olino, your, your hand is up?
Okay, uh, do we need to make a motion for the, uh, Resolution Twenty dash twenty-two dash zero zero seven? The wire transfer? Okay.
Yes.
So I'll go ahead and make that, uh, motion to approve that resolution.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to, uh, approve the resolution for the transfer.
Okay, so my motion is to approve, uh, Resolution Twenty dash twenty-two dash zero zero seven. And it's a wire transfer to the Department of Administration and the amount of three. three hundred nineteen thousand two hundred thirty-seven and ninety-eight cents, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And that's my motion.
Okay, motion on the floor. Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, second, Commissioner Rias. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any nays? Any nays? No nays. Director motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's my understanding on our request for the monthly meetings that will be taken up again at next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we just have that discussion?
I'm sorry? Wait.
The next meeting. This is Commissioner Camacho.
Yes, uh, basically what I would like to do is, um, is get a little bit more information from the Director regarding, regarding, regarding the load. And as Director, you wanna, are you, you think it should?
He has already stayed here on his report.
That he needs to meet every two weeks or
So the, Mr. Chair, you're, we were discussing that.
Yes, I, I, uh, yes, I'm aware, I'm aware of, um,
Uh, I think a lot of commissioners favorite the once a month, uh, because it was recommended by our director. Uh, and so we're gonna see how it's gonna work, uh, you know, once a month. But we also mentioned that, you know, uh, we may go it, uh, beyond five, uh, five o'clock because it's monthly. But, or we can also, a meeting for other, you know, other urgent matters. So, but if you want to respond to that, just let you know that we did. Uh, most of us made that agreement, but I'm not too sure if we should have a motion on that or just let it ride and, you know.
Um, Commissioner Westling, yeah, your hands up.
Oh, um, I was just going to add on to Commissioner Cruz, uh, that the Director did submit a, 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 which I feel to be a very detailed explanation, um, supported by, um, um, reasons why, um, he feels that, uh, the, uh, that we can move towards a monthly meeting versus a bi-weekly. So perhaps to afford you the opportunity to review it, because perhaps you have not had a chance to review his detailed, uh, explanation, uh, so that, you know, uh, you could see that why, why the three, three commissioners did support this, 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 this move to a monthly, uh, meeting versus a, a bi-weekly.
Yeah, I, I, I support it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Commissioner Camacho, you're breaking up.
I said I too support the monthly meetings. I believe that we can handle the workload, um, um, within, within the time allotted. So I would support that, what, monthly meetings.
Director?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, I do recommend a monthly meeting. And like I said, if something does come up that is extremely important or that the commission, the commissioners feel must be addressed, there's always the option of a special meeting. That option has always been open.
Yes, uh, could I ask a couple of questions, uh, real quick? Also regarding, regarding, going back to in-person meetings?
Yes.
Uh, what's the likelihood of that? And is there a timeframe that we're looking at?
As soon as we get the purchase order to pick up the, uh, uh, the tablets, so that we could live stream when we're all here in the office. Uh, we figured out that we could do that through YouTube, like the way we're doing now. It'd be a one-time, uh, cash per, uh, purchase. Uh, once we have that, then we'll be able to meet i- in office. But if we were to go with the, uh, PBS, uh, price of two hundred fifty dollars for two hours and then a hundred dollars for every hour after, uh, that is pretty much out of our budget range. Because I explained earlier how much it costs for the print ads that we must put out. That is pretty expensive and we can't afford, uh, two hundred fifty or three hundred fifty dollar, uh, m- m- meetings. I mean, that, that will be monthly, that if we have two times a month, that would be seven hundred dollars more added on to our total cost and that would bring that up significantly. Uh, right now, we're concerned that we, the Speaker did ask us and we did commit to put out these full-page ads for potential transfers in progress that we've identified and we've, where Joey's been preparing the ad. But we're trying to identify the funds for it. And the way we do to identify the funds is if we don't spend money for so many different items, uh, then we, we come up a little lapse in our own, within our appropriated budget. And we put that together. So when we have enough money we identified, then we could pay for one ad. So, uh, as long as we keep having our, our semi-monthly meetings, uh, we're not accumulating because we set aside the funds for that already to try to make sure that occurred. And if you remember last fiscal year, because BBMR did cut our budget, uh, there was a time in March when I said we had fifty dollars left in our budget for meetings until we were able to get, uh, some compact impact monies that allowed us to continue. Uh, we are still counting the pennies. We're able to do more this year. But the laws have changed and the laws, uh, as far as the open government law requires a lot more for us to, uh, to adhere to. And because of the live streaming and the advertisement of our entire agenda, that has jumped the cost of having these meetings. It's not just the, the stipends paid to the commissioners. It's also the cost of, uh, the print ads that must go out. And if we're not able to use YouTube, like what happened a couple of, uh, a meeting, two meetings back, when O-Tech cut us off. Uh, if we have to pay for that, then we simply can't afford the meetings. I mean, that's the bottom line. So what we've done is, uh, we've used our own, Joey brought in his own personal computer. And this is how we're able to continue our live streaming, in case we get caught off by O-Tech again. Because O-Tech has a legitimate, uh, excuse is that there's only one pipe going for all this data to be processed. And because a lot of agencies are live streaming, they simply cut off YouTube. And YouTube is free for us because we have a, a Zoom account. With Zoom, uh, with our Zoom account, we're allowed to live stream via YouTube. But it's not the YouTube issue, it's the live streaming and everybody getting on it for the same, same reason. Trying to save money and comply with the open government law.
Mr. Director, um, you might want to also see if, um, see if Facebook Live satisfies that requirement?
Yeah, but we'll still be live streaming. That's the issue with O-Tech. Live streaming takes up a lot of data. Uh, so that's why they cut off YouTube. We fit, if we switch to Facebook, uh, they'll cut Facebook too. So, and they promised us that it's only cut off between the hours of eight to five. But then again, I don't have money for overtime to bring people in after five. So it's kind of like putting our backs up against the wall and trying to comply with open government law. And the new laws saying that what we must do now. Uh, you know, with the limited funds that we are allowed by appropriation to use, uh, it, 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 we are counting our pennies. Yes, we have fifteen million over in the bank and yes, we have over eight hundred thousand our CIT account. But appropriation only allows us to use four hundred eight thousand. So we are from our CIT account and that's our limitation. Uh, four hundred eight thousand dollars. So we're asking for more, almost five hundred thousand this time around. But with the limited budget and the limited staff, uh, we simply don't have the funds or the resources. And so we set aside so much for semi-monthly meetings. That means to have, uh, twenty-four meetings a year, uh, for ads and to cover all the other costs. But because of that, uh, we don't have much money available for additional ads. Like what the Speaker wants us to do with putting out these, uh, full-page ads of properties that are in potential, that are potential return. And for those that we advertised in the past under the Public Law one oh three, uh, three, three, nine, that were returned. And we're trying to identify who the original landowners or the heirs are, uh, find out if they're alive or not. And if anybody is out there who wants that property, so to get those ads out, that'll be an additional cost. I'm just saying, until we find lapses within our own budget from areas, uh, then we could take those monies and transfer them into paying for these ads. That's why the ads have not really come out at this point. We're trying to identify where we can get around it because there's certain things that are fixed. You know, like personnel costs, you know, with payroll and, and the benefits and all that. Those are kind of fixed and that eats up most of our budget. And we buy very few supplies and very few equipment. That's why we're applying for federal grants to, to obtain those, those things that we need. And that's why we're asking for ninety thousand more. And that's because we had that public hearing that said there was ninety thousand available in general fund monies. And, uh, the Senator said that we, they know we really need those monies. So we put that amount in and hopefully we'll get it from the general fund and not from our CIT account. So, yeah, it, it's a lot to do with the funds we have available and the practicality of getting things done. And that's how come we looked at our options and we decided the best way to get back to face-to-face meetings, do a one-time, uh, outlay of cash, buy, uh, tablets for each commissioner. And when you come in, uh, the, you each have a tablet in front of you, like you do right now. You have your computer or smartphone in front of you. And we would zoom the meetings and live stream them, except you'll be here face-to-face. And that way we cut off PBS and anybody else. And we got our Wi-Fi in. So we had to think outside the box to get that going. But, uh, and doing the Wi-Fi and having those, uh, that, that equipment available will also remove us from cra- uh, creating a bottleneck with a pipeline of data that O-Tech's complaining about. And that's why, uh, two meetings ago, they cut us off. And we were caught by surprise, remember? We, that meeting became informational and we could not take any action. Because O-Tech simply cut us off. We don't want that to occur. And so today, right now, we're live streaming, but we had to find a way around it within our limited budget.
Okay, um, thank you, Director. Um, are we good with that? We're good with that, um, that, that situation? We're good with it, right? Hello?
Yeah, uh, you're addressing me or the other commissioners?
Actually, I was addressing you. Yeah, we're good with it. So the situation, we're, we're actually fine as it is now.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, we're good. We're live streaming. Our meetings are, we can, the actions we take are legitimate. Uh, they're enforceable. And that's what we're concerned about, is making sure that, that that does occur. I'm just saying that we had to think outside the box. We had to work things through. Uh, hopefully we'll get and find some funds available to, uh, to, let me, hold on, let me get rid of it. Okay, we'll find some funds so that we could average, put those advertisements out that our Oversight Chair wants us to get out. Uh, but we'll be asking for more money for that. And that, that's why we have the, coming up in May seventeen, our, our pre-hearing for the budget and June second for our public hearing on the budget. So hopefully we can get that then, but until we do, uh, it becomes extremely hard. And that's why if we do go to month to month, we will accumulate some cash on the side that will allow us to put these ads out. Because then it will stop putting the ads out for the meetings for the, you know, at least once a month. And those have all become savings that we could apply towards the ads, uh, for the, the big page ads that cost a thousand to, to a twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollars each.
Okay, uh, while we're just, while we're discussing the, the meetings. If, if, if we, um, let's say had a full agenda.
Yeah.
Which typically we, w- we do. Um, and we don't complete, I, I really don't want to go past five. As a matter of fact, I'd like to at least stop earlier, at least fifteen minutes minimum. Uh, you know, for the staff to, to close up and, and have time to, you know, wrap up and leave. Uh, despite what the agenda is going on. And, uh, like you said, we could, we could table as opposed to adjourning and table and then do, have an, uh, a, a special meeting if necessary, like what you're saying? As opposed to waiting the next month?
Or we could start the meetings earlier or you could, uh, uh, go into recess and continue the meeting the next day or the following day. There are other options.
Oh, okay, okay, there, that, that's one.
You could, you could start earlier or recess. And, and that means the meeting is not adjourned, just recess, we'll come back the next day and continue the meeting.
Oh, I'm, uh, I'm very happy with that because, uh, basically, uh, we had, we didn't, we were kind of unaware that we could actually, actually do that. We were going, we were going past five, way past five.
Yeah, we could start at one o'clock if necessary.
Okay, depending on what's on the agenda, but it should be, it should be consistent, right? If it's one o'clock, it's one o'clock or can typically two o'clock, but the next one's full, we have it at one? Is that what you're saying?
We could, we could attempt to do that, but that's why the ads and in the open government law says that we place them out. The reason we had this timeline is because in the past with the face-to-face meetings with the Department of Land Management, when Chamor Land Trust Commission and Ancestral Land Commission and the Guam Land Use Commission were all rolled into the Department of Land Management, uh, there was a problem with, uh, when these commissions could meet in, in the conference room. And so they spaced them out for that very reason. Plus, we all share the same attorney and we don't want him tied into two different meetings at one time. So that's why the timelines were set up that we were only on Wednesday and they were on Tuesday and they were on Thursday or whatever it may have been. Uh, those were the reasons for that, for that scheduling.
Uh, okay, in line with the discussion, um, I, I, I did, um, hear, uh, Commissioner, uh, Rias, um, you know, uh, uh, comment about when in, in-person meetings are gonna, uh, you know, to, to restart the in-person meetings. But, uh, I, I know that some of the board members are, are pretty, uh, content with, with what we're doing with Zoom. And especially given the, the situation now with gas prices and inflation, you know, uh, Zoom is, is, I, I'm still comfortable with Zoom at the moment, uh, given, given the world situation.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the thing with the, with the Zoom is we could have half face-to-face and half on Zoom. You'd still be in attendance.
Yeah. Yeah, I see. So if we, we could, we could, we could have all on Zoom, all in person or some in Zoom and some in person.
Hybrid, yes.
We're a hybrid, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. That's good to know. That, that definitely is very good to go. I mean, to know. Well, as soon as, as soon as gas, uh, you know, drops down to fifty cents a gallon, I think you'll be seeing a
That prediction, prediction is, uh, it may hit nine dollars a gallon. So I don't want to break anybody's if you have a V eight or something, I would move to a scooter or a small, small car. But, uh, we're, this is already topping, uh, seven dollars. So just to give you an idea. Uh, yeah, inflation is terrible. And if we enter what some are saying a recession, uh, then we're in for a big ride. And, uh, just my advice economically is be careful on how you commit yourself at this time to any outstanding debt. Uh, hopefully that doesn't happen, but with the war in Ukraine and, and now with the U S, uh, predicting, uh, another surge around October with the coronavirus in the U S mainland as winter, uh, approaches. Uh, I'd be very careful about how I commit my funds at this point in time. But that's just from another thought. That's from an economic type issue that I just, uh, short of a personal advice. Just be careful how you commit your funds and how much debt that you collect over this period of time.
Okay.
By getting back to it, uh, do we have, uh, at least like, uh, Commissioner Cruz said, uh, go with a pilot and we'll pilot this?
Yes, uh, I, I think that's a good idea unless the, the commissioners, I, I think, uh, would, let's do a pilot. And, uh, and, and, uh, work with the situation. Uh, we've never really, uh, actually, uh, what do you call it, when you, uh, recess? We've, I think we've only done that once, if I recall. We've never, we've, uh, we've never tabled really, uh, uh, we tabled a couple of things a couple of times, but it wasn't really often. So, yeah, let's do a pilot with it. I'm fine with it. Especially if we go in, uh, if for some reason we end up going into, uh, in-person. I think once a month would be good for me, given the situation in the world, but, uh, you know, I'm good with the pilot.
And there's always, there's always the special meetings and there's always the work sessions.
Yeah, exactly. So, uh, that, now that that's clear, it, uh, it, uh, alleviates a lot of my concerns regarding especially uh, some major hot issues that we, we've had. And, you know, we've always been in court. It was always, yeah, and we've always had lawsuits and constant updates with, so it never came soon enough in the past. So, uh, shall we, uh, do we need, uh, any special, uh, um, um, motion or anything, or we just have you do it, Director? I'm sorry, Commissioner Lino, you have your hands up. Commissioner Lino?
Oh, okay, I I was just thinking because earlier the director stated that it's just a matter of time until all the personnel comes back for the signatures for the tablets and that all all the bills are in order and it's just awaiting for signature, right, Director?
Yes, for the purchase orders. And so it means that we're right at the edge of that. We just need somebody at GSA to come in who can sign, uh, who's authorized to sign. And Director Byrne is a DOA is very much aware of that. So hopefully ours, our purchase order will be moved to the front of the of the desk and get that signature today or tomorrow. Kathy's working on it. Uh, pretty much asking them to please, we've been waiting for months for this. Could you just sign off and send it to us so we can get our work done? And that way, uh, you all have some tablets that are from ancestral land so that we can either meet in face to face with you carrying the tablet and be on Zoom, or you could be uh at home or in your car and still log in. And we could live stream completely with that.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, you're on mute. I see your mouth moving, but I don't hear.
Yeah.
Okay, um, do we need, do we need a a special, a special motion or or can we just move and having you, um, let's move the pilot?
Yeah. Just carry on.
Just carry on and we'll just carry on. I don't think we need a motion, Director. I think the board is
I don't think you need a motion.
Yeah, okay, Director, just let's move with the pilot. We'll move to once a month. And 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 bear in mind that we can uh, we can go ahead and and uh, have continuance of urgent matters and, you know, uh, big issues of concern by, uh, like you said, recessing. And uh, and and having special special meetings. So we're good to go with it?
And that, yeah, so based on that, the next meeting after today would be June eighth.
Okay, and uh, let's uh, with regard to the in-person meeting, we're going to just stick with with Zoom for now. Let's go ahead and keep that in mind about the in-person meetings, but I think we'll stick with Zoom for now. And uh, unless there's any uh objections. Okay. We're good to go? So just bossy, Director? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we move on down to uh, Gita Progress Part.
Buenas tardes. Um, buenos, buenos, and good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Noclevea, Vice Chair La Guania and all Commissioners, as well as JLC Director uh, Birch and staff. My name's Tony Ariola. I'm representing Gita and along with me is Diego Mendiola, our property, our real property manager, Mike Cruz, our project manager, and Christina Vasquez, our program coordinator. Uh, I'm here today to report the May eleven Gita monthly progress report. Uh, the following is a progress report on Gita's efforts to manage Land Bank Trust properties as required by section one of the MOU between Gita and the GALC Land Bank Trust. First on the list is Weddingell Junction, Northern Market. Their current deferred balance uh is one million sixty nine thousand three hundred seventy three dollars and seventy cents. Their interest balance is a hundred and eighty nine thousand three hundred ninety and thirty one cents. And their total outstanding balance as of May as of this month, twenty twenty two, is one million two hundred fifty eight thousand seven hundred sixty four dollars and one cents. As you know, Northern Market is on an extended extended one-year full rent deferral from November twenty twenty one to October twenty twenty two of this year. Their quarterly report is also due on May ten, twenty twenty two. Second one on the list is April Harbor parcel number one, which is Quick Space. Uh, the tenant is current of its lease rent uh with their outstanding balance of three thousand nine hundred forty nine dollars and sixty three cents. Their last payment was received on April four, twenty twenty two. Next one on the list is April Harbor Reservation F twelve, Mattson. Their la- their outstanding balance is twenty seven thousand seven hundred thirty three dollars. And their last payment received was in April twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. Uh, the next one on the list is Lot April Harbor Reservation F twelve dash R two. That's the trans still property in Polaris. They're on a month-to-month tenancy and payment plan all the way from May twenty uh, beginning May twenty twenty one to present. And their last payment was received on May third in the amount of six hundred dollars. Their current outstanding balance is nine thousand hundred dollars. The Indian decent cable landing station, uh, Lot one oh one nine, which is the AT&T building. They're current with their lease rents. Uh, as you know, they make their regular monthly payments via electronic fund transfer at the beginning of every month. Uh, the next one on the list is the Lot April Harbor Reservation F twelve Polaris Point. That is the Smith Bridge Guam uh company that we have a license agreement with. A tenant is on a limited license term agreement for a rental of the two acres for three months that began on April one, twenty twenty two and expiring on June thir- thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Next is the Tizen Properties, the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Building. Um, their outstanding balance is two hundred and twenty four thousand dollars. And their last payment was received on April nineteen, twenty twenty two. They also make monthly payments uh via electronic fund transfers before the end of the month. Uh, Department of Public Health Social Services, that's the WIC building. Uh, the last payment received was in April four, twenty twenty two with their outstanding uh current balance of thirty seven thousand four hundred ninety nine dollars and thirty five cents. Other items on the list, which is the RFP twenty one zero one one. It's the lease and development of the Land Bank Trust property. That's the Lot April Harbor Reservation F dash twelve dash one. Portion of F dash twelve dash two and F dash twelve dash three of the Polaris Point PD location. As of May fourth, twenty twenty two, uh, ongoing lease negotiations between Gita, JLC and the vendor. Moving on down to Farmers Co-op Association of Guam. Uh, Gita received the financial report from farmers indicating a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty two thousand two hundred forty five dollar gross revenue for twenty twenty. Based on public law thirty two, that's twenty three, uh, farmers just to utilize the property. And the balance due is three thousand two hundred forty five and ninety cents uh for calendar year twenty twenty one. I'm sorry, there was a little error there. And we're just revised at the calendar year twenty 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 instead of fiscal year twenty twenty one. Also, uh, Gita was also informed of farmers' loss of its nonprofit status. Uh, it's Gita's understanding that the issue is uh currently being resolved with farmers and Department of Revenue and Tax to reinstate its nonprofit status. Uh, going back to the three house lots in Tizen, Lot five one seven five dash one, as well as Lot five one eight two dash one REM. Uh, Gita is currently working on the recommendations for the highest and best use of the property. The MOU between Gita and JLC for Investment Services, uh, Gita received the MOU from the AG and we submitted it to Governor's Office on April twenty sixth for approval and signature is still pending. At so present time. Also, uh, the JLC representative requested for Gita's Finance Committee. Uh, the committee is chaired by Gita Vice Chairman Junus Bodan, which oversees the investment accounts. Uh, JLC rep, the request, uh, although it's not required, it's not mandatory. JLC rep uh can be an individual designated by the JLC either by Commissioner, Director or Staff. And uh, the committee meets uh one to two times uh on a quarterly basis. Uh, this concludes my report. Should there be any questions, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
So just bossy, uh, Tony? Um, any questions from the board? Any questions? I have no questions for uh, for Tony.
I don't.
No, no, no questions, Mr. Tony. Good job.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you, Chairman. Thanks, everyone.
Uh, Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, um, Tony, thank you so much again for the report and for the new format that you've been following. Uh, just one question for April Harbor Parcel Number One, Commissary Junction Quick Space. Uh, you state underneath the the columns that tenant is current with his lease rents, but then shows an outstanding balance?
Yeah, my apologies on that. I have to revise that. Uh, yeah, the uh yeah, I have to revise that. Thank you.
Okay, just 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 wanted to make sure where where the error was.
Yeah, the outstanding balance for the May, the May lease payment.
Okay, so that just, okay, that hasn't come in yet, but the last lease payment was received on April fourth.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Uh, Vice Chair?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just, I just, I just brought to my attention. Yeah, uh, Mr. Ariola. And perhaps the Director can chime in on this one for the with regards to the one in Tizen, the properties, the EPA. That has been a longstanding uh uh outstanding of the two hundred plus K, right? Is there, is that non-collectible or where are we at on that status?
Um, Mr. Vice Chair, who've been uh, they've been um sending us uh payments via electronic fund transfers. Uh, it's not consistent though, and when they do send us payments, it's like for five, six months, uh, period of monthly payments, uh. That's how they've been paying due to the, uh, I guess they're all being paid through federal funds. Yeah, but they haven't been consistently, uh, like I said, when they make payments, they make it in like five or six months, uh, period of a total monthly payments. Uh, the last payment that we received was uh on April nineteen of last month.
Yeah, I concur. I concur with what Tony just said. Uh, the issue there is that since EPA moved in those buildings uh before us, they have always been behind on their rent from the records that I viewed. And they would make a bunch of payments upfront, but they never catch up. What they are planning to do, and they've already got money for is to, and I believe this may occur in the next two to three years, they'll be moving out of that building and into their own building up by the old uh transfer station up. I believe that's in Dedidu on the border between Dedidu and Jiggo. Uh, they've already got approval. They got the federal funds for that. That's where they're concentrating, but because uh, their funds that are supposed to be used to pay the rent are federal funds, they should not be late. Uh, and the same goes with uh the WIC program. They're catching up, but they still have an outstanding balance of thirty seven thousand. But when they do pay, do you pay, they also pay and lump sum. I'm not sure if that is just the way or because of the way they receive their federal funds or not. But I can see with WIC catching up eventually, but with EPA being behind by over two hundred twenty four thousand dollars, uh, that's quite a bit. Uh, they never paid much to get them below two hundred thousand.
They only played the, paid the monthly, you know?
Or sometimes they pay three or four payments at one time. And the same goes with WIC, yeah. WIC does something similar. So I'm not sure if it's the way they handle their federal funds or not. But I don't see a reason why, uh, because of the federal funds that are supposed to be obligated for uh their rent. Uh, why EPA is so far behind? Maybe that's something we could address to their management and find out when they can or what they're going to do to catch up on their delinquent rent. Because uh, we see them moving out of our building in a couple of years, maybe three years. And I I don't want to see this become an uncollectible. I I see your concern, uh, Mr. Vice Chair.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Director. There you go. Very good.
Adam Secretary Cruz?
Um, cooperative association, what is the um is the status of being, uh, I mean, the changes of of nonprofit organization have to do with paying their rent?
You're talking about the Farmers Co-op?
Yes.
Okay, uh, no, they should pay the rent. They're obligated for that, whether they are not uh profit or non-for-profit. The the big issue is if they are to be a for-profit organization, their rent. I mean, if we're renting, uh, right now, we have a license with Smith Bridge for soft soil property. It's almost wetland for a thousand three hundred dollars a month per acre. They have seven acres up there in prime land. That will be a whole lot more than a thousand dollars per month, could be three thousand dollars a month for seven acres. And that'll be monthly if we were to push that on them as a
They shouldn't make a payment, some payment for now until
Also, from what I understand, uh, Director and uh, Adam Secretary, I believe that it also is the difference of ten percent.
That's a huge difference. That's ten percent of fair market value. It ought to be monthly versus two percent of gross uh revenues annually. There's a huge difference in the amount. Yes.
But so they 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 are going to get their their uh nonprofit status though. I I regain their
I believe they will. I believe they will. It just might be time, uh, a little time for it, but hopefully they can also at the same time uh pay their rent. And that's what I hope Gita would do is pursue the rental payments as they are nonprofit at the time that it was due. Uh, they lost their profit status October of just last year, so it's not even a year. So even for last year, once we uh sent them notice again, once Gita sends them a notice that their rent is due for fiscal year uh twenty one, uh, they should also have that rent made available to us. So they the month of May, that's our our our, when we start collecting for the year, so they should pay us a for another rent of one year.
At, at ten percent.
Well, ten percent if we take a motion now to negotiate.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, then then that would pretty much kill the co-op if they do become profit. They could not afford it.
I thi- I think I think we could uh come up with a with a a situation that uh that we can we can work with as opposed to being butting heads with it. Uh, Vice Chair, your hands up?
On a separate matter, Tony, Tony, go ahead, Tony. Uh, Mr. Uh, Tony, this is with regards to, you know, I have it noted in my calendar. Did you report the Northern Marketing uh, the um, report that is due yesterday? Did you receive a report from them?
Uh, no, we did not receive the report uh yesterday, uh, Vice Chair.
Okay, so I think you need to follow up on that because that was the indicated date that their their report is due.
Okay, certainly will.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Any further questions for Gita? No further questions? Tony? Uh, so just bossy for your report. Thank you.
Almaz, thank you as well.
Okay, say hello to everybody in the staff. Okay, so we're gonna move down to um on the agenda, we are on old business, item number six, old business. A farmer's market financial and audit update. I believe we've already uh covered that. So um, unless Director, you wanted to add something to that?
No, I don't have any more to add to it.
Okay, let's move. And and I believe we already uh Gita covered item B, which is the MOU still at the Governor's Office, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, so let's move down to item number seven, new business. I believe there's nothing on new business, Director? I believe there's nothing on new business, Director.
Right, but Vice Chair has a stand-up, Mr. Chair.
Okay, yeah, you know, I, you know, just just reminiscing. Do you have? Anything that you can share with us, Mr. Director, with regards to the released lands? Most particularly, I pass by there regularly, like the USO properties. And other released lands, can you provide us a brief update on on any of these lands that are? Are due for either return to the original landowners? Or or what is the administration dealing with those matters?
Yeah, in the, there are some that are in the process of being released. And of course, the old USO, also known as Hoover Park, is one of them. It will be released under public, US public law one oh six dash five oh four. And what I understand is that there are. A whole bunch of original landowners attached to that property. So what my understanding is, it was. Asked of the municipal council of PD how they would like to best handle that. Because right next to it, they have Santos Park. And if it were returned or kept by the government and used to extend Santos Park. All the way up through the old USO or Hoover Park and make it one, then it'll provide more. Space there for the community to use. My understanding, there are several family owners of that property. And because of that, it's such a small lot that they could be over a thousand heirs. For what? I don't know how many acres, three acres or something. So it, my understanding is that's where it's at, but it's a potential return in the process of being returned. That and also, I'm just trying to remember off the top of my head, but we could have that prepared for the next meeting. Unless you give me time to pull out the negative report. There's also property for the Southern wastewater treatment plant in that area there. Those properties are slated also for possible return. And again, I believe it's under one oh six five oh four, which means that we'll have extreme difficulty if we choose to return it. To the original landowners. We could attempt to return it, but the federal government does have a lot more teeth in it. We don't have that loophole that we would have under a one oh three, I believe, three, three, nine, that public law. And Amawi Tunnel, which is in Timuning, there's another one that's scheduled for return also. It's in the process. And I'll buy, was that Tangi San? They have one or two lots in that area also scheduled for a. Return in progress, not yet returned, but and as soon as Department of. Land Management lets us know what occurs with those properties, then we will let you know. Once they've made their decision, because before it comes to us, it has to clear that department. And and we'll let you know as soon as that occurs. Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you, but Mr. Director, with the for the, you know, as a matter of time. Yeah, can you provide a list of that and the status updates for our next meeting? That's very good information and, you know, I just would like to have an update on that. Thank you for that.
We'll get that ready. So is it just the those that are in the process return, or you want those also potential return?
Yes, yeah, well, whatever, both both potential and tour returns and also a list for possibly public. Use, if you can do a little.
Yeah, we could let you know which which public law, which US public law they fall under. That too, because falling, some are fall under the old law of one oh three and some fall under the new, most fall under the new law, one oh six. And that's the ad that we were working on that we really want to publish. Joey's been working on that. And that's the one we want to put out there with a full page to let people know that this is occurring and which law is it being returned under. That is work in progress that we have ongoing right now. But now that we're going to have time to work on it, I think I can get Joey to to move on that. And have that information available.
Yeah, that's that's a high priority, Mr. Director. As you remember, the the speaker has always emphasized to us. Please inform the original landowners. So that'll be a great thing that you publicize that.
We need to publish it, and that's why I gave you the cost of the ads, that we're trying to find funds within our budget right now. For that, and if we move to the one-month meeting, that's going to open up some of that, so we will get the monies for it.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add to that, the questions on that. One, you said there's one oh three and then there's one oh six, right?
Yes.
Okay, can you can can you confirm if there's stipulations in that one oh six with? Pre requirement of a land use plan? I know that.
No, not not under one oh six.
Because it was for one oh three. But not in one oh six?
Right, they closed the loophole.
Yeah, because of that stipulation there.
Right, they closed the loophole on one oh six, and that's.
Well, one oh, one oh three did have, one oh three did have public use. But, you know, and they were supposed to permit, I mean, submit a land use plan. And and which they did and which which outlined that it was going to be returned to the original landowners, and you're right, they they did close the. They did close that loop with that. I just was wondering if they they had a. prerequisite for a, you know, submitted land use plan before it goes to GSA for release.
I could pull it out quickly.
Okay, under one oh six, five oh four, specifically what it says. Any transfer of excess real property of the government of Guam may be. Only for public purpose and shall be without further consideration. And two D, the property is used only for public purpose and cannot be converted to any other use. It says, the definition is shall not include the transfer of land to any individual. Or entity for private use other than on a non-discriminatory basis. Non-discriminatory means that has its return for the use of the community must be used by everyone. So that's the problem I'm having with one oh six. And that's where I'm trying to find a a loophole.
I would like to, I would like to have you, you know, submit that to the speaker, say that it came from the chairman. Just to outline to her that that's what we were talking, we were basically outlining.
I did submit in November, I think it was last year with the oversight hearing. Testimony that it that did include all of that and our concerns.
I'd like you to resub, resubmit it.
I'll do it again. Okay.
Thank you. So just Masi, Director, please resubmit that. And and outline those those sections you just read to us. Okay, Vice Chair.
Yeah, one last final comment, Mr. Director, you know, that that is very enlightening, that one oh six, five oh four. You know, I hope that Tangi San. Properties there fall under that category. You know, that place is a mess, man. You know, squatters living there, you know, I think the public should take that over, you know, and. Clean it up, you know, and and have it. Controlled and regulated because it is, it is bad. I'm sorry, I grew up, you know, in that area. Fishing waters.
Are you talking Tangi San? There's squatters way down there?
Down there, the beach, they're littering and camping and. Growing there, it's just pathetic, you know, and there's just no control. So I hope that if there is a means to move forward on those properties. Those that can be used for public use and have Parks and Rec or some. Other entity take that over, because I I know at one time it was under public. Control where they had those huts there, you know, the pavilions.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair for bringing that up and bring it to our attention.
That's the old park. I believe that's, I believe that is under Parks and Rec. The old Parkway, but there will be property returned further in in Tangi San that's still under federal ownership. That will be returned, but the old park, I believe that may be under Parks and Rec, and. I'm not sure why it was abandoned or all the huts and everything were torn down. I remember what you're talking about. I've gone up there many times in the past too, when I was younger. There's nothing like that anymore.
Yeah, and you know what? That's possible action for reversionary clause, you know, but that is just. Just really bad, so if there's a way, maybe we can lobby and, you know, get a hold of Parks and Rec and find out what they can do with that. That's a. Beautiful public beach, but it needs to be regulated and controlled. You know, that's all I'm saying, you know? It is, it's bad, and people are living there, I'm telling you. I don't know what facilities they're using, but they're living there. Several families are living there. Thank you, Mr. Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
But that's not part of the property I'm talking about that's going to be returned. It'll be additional lots returned.
Yeah, I understand. I think that's further in, further in with the park plan is further in. I understand, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Also, the chore of actually evicting and removing squatters and people that have been there for that's, that's another. That's another subject in itself. It's. It's it's very difficult, you know, because there's reluctance to do it for some reason. But Vice Chair, thank you so much for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, that's when that's when EPA can come in, you know, because there's no, there's no sanitation facilities there. They have to move them out, you know, just like the one here at the Taco Bell in Dedidu. You notice that car that was camped out in front of Taco Bell? I think one evening the mayor just just removed that. Thank goodness, you know? Thank God, you know, if you just sneak upon at night, lock that stuff, get rid of it, man, and problem solved. So I'm sure I see Commissioner Westing nodding, all right. Man, I was so happy when I saw that. What when I, that I didn't see any no longer.
Yeah, thank you again.
We just have to put our hands in the, you know, as 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 caretakers of our land. You know, we need to all have that sense of pride.
Exactly, exactly, and we're we're still on new business, but I guess we're going to move on. That was basically more like comments and something, Commissioner Lino?
I'm just curious, back then, I don't know if it's right, but I just want to know. Was it ever resolved regarding the Tomorrowland Trust? And with Guam Ancestral Land Commission, where that one. Family is struggling or using the ancestral land instead of. What they were given from the Tomorrowland Trust, was that?
That's Ron Benando you're talking about, up north. There was. Not as far as the lands swap, the answer is no. I've tried to get together in the past with Jack Hattick, but he. Was transferred out of the department. We were planning to have a meeting on that. Now our Commissioner Camacho is. The acting director there, maybe we can work something out for humanitarian purposes. Yeah, I brought it up several times, and my understanding is that's just one lot that you are aware of. My understanding, there may be two or three more.
Uh huh.
Yes, so that's just one. That that CLTC leased property out that are ancestral land property and not CLTC. And so we're, we need to look at, and I need to sit down with their director. And of course, Joey with me with the land agent and with one of their land agents. And come up with something that their commission and you guys, our commission will agree to some solution to it. Some humanitarian solution, because I know the Benando family has lived there for years. And when his parents died, he tried to get access to the utilities to find out that it was ancestral land property and not CLTC. And yet their lease was with CLTC. But it wasn't their fault that, and they built a house there and everything, so.
Can we, can we move on it, Director? If all, if everybody's on the same page, then let's, let's see, we can move on it and get it done. It's been years.
I've been, I've been trying to do that, but because of the workloads of both agencies, it seems like. Their side and our side, while we sat down and we brought up that we have to do this. We have not been able to sit down and make time to work on it. But we acknowledge that we actually got to get this done. And I know Ron Benando personally, so I know what he's going through up there. So yes, we should, we we have to get that done, and I'll I'll bring it to CLTC again and see what they can do, and of course. Our attorney, Nick, is their attorney, so. This should be something that I don't think should be that.
Amicable solution that.
Yeah, like, give us all the land around. Around where we rent out to Quickspace, we could get all that property and make more money from Quickspace.
Yeah.
We have a guaranteed tenant.
We have to resolve.
Yeah.
And move on because that's been on the back burner for quite some times. And the thing here, what we're trying to do is almost like the Vietnam War. That the. Earlier war been resolved and Vietnam is still back there, so, you know, if we could resolve. One thing stopped and, you know, move on.
Yeah.
Very good, very good. So just Masi on that, Director. Let's move on. I think we're done with our new business, public comments, item number eight.
Mr. Chair, there were no requests for to make public comments.
On that, okay, we'll move down to item number nine. Our next meeting would be June eleven, Director.
June eight, if it's going to stay, yeah. That'll be the second Wednesday of June.
Okay, so it will be June eight will be our next meeting, Vice Chair.
Yeah, well, Mr. Director and Mr. Chair, yes, so I guess you're going to have to provide us your. Your budget report prior to June second. You have a meeting, I believe, on the seventeenth of May. So I don't know if you can share it with the chairman.
Yes, I'll share it with you, and I'll also come up with questions I believe are going to be asked and answers like I did last year. And hopefully that will resolve everything so that we can get the extra funds that we need to operate the office. So we don't have to be pinching our pennies every time we try to put one ad out in the paper or something. It's a tight budget.
Yeah, Mr. Director, and in preparation for the budget hearing, please prepare. Copies of the notifications to the original landowners because the speaker will hound on us again. Please, have they been informed? Because in finos tomorrow, they copla us several times already, so so give some hard copy evidence. In preparation, because that's going to be the first thing again on the speaker. Notes to, do you have, have you been contacting them and and can you provide that information as? The listings and the names and who are the point of contact on our our level of effort? That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, we we have that, those that we've contacted and we've been in discussion with lately, we have that all on record. So, okay, but I believe if she brings up during the budget hearing, that's fine. We'll be prepared for that. We'll be prepared for our numbers too on why we have to get this done.
Okay.
Okay, any other? Any any other comments before we adjourn?
None, motion to adjourn.
Okay, I want to apologize, sorry for my tech, it was technical difficulties. When it rains, it pours both sides of my my phone and the. Computer was, just one of those days, it sucks, but.
One last, one last, Kathy, Kathy, Mr. Chair. Kathy, can I meet up with you? I'll meet up with you tomorrow, okay? I'll text you and we'll meet up. I need to, yeah, if we can meet up halfway, no, we have to, I have the only one that didn't sign the valuation. Sorry about that, Mr. Director. So, you know, we got an official, we've got an official vehicle, Mr. Director, I please, you know, if you allow her to be halfway. At least halfway, no, Kathy, and I'll just sign my. My George Washington signature on that. I do apologize.
Okay, John.
Thank you.
I mean, as our legal counsel, if gas stipends are included.
No, that's what the fifty dollars is for. That's what the fifty dollars is for. That's it for the transportation.
You know, I saw on me on Facebook, you know, on on top of a gas spot that says financing available. Crazy. Anyway, everybody be safe. So just Masi, our next meeting will be on June eight.
June eight.
Second week.
I moved to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
I moved to adjourn. Yes, actually, Commissioner Lino moved to adjourn. It is four twenty eight PM. This meeting is adjourned.